Welcome everybody to our second Share and Learn session with Nottingham City ICP. My name's Tracy Tyrrell, I'm Director of Nursing for Nottingham City Care, and I'm also a Deputy Clinical Lead for the ICP. And I'm really delighted today that we've got our second Share and Learn. And we've got Catherine Underwood, who is the Corporate Director of People for Nottingham City Council, going to speak to us. What we'd invite is that we're going to have Catherine talk to us for around 20 minutes, and then we're going to take a series of questions. And what we're asking colleagues to do is to pop those in the chat box, and then we'll read out your questions and we'll look at answers. We've also got Rich Brady, who is our Programme Director for the ICP with us. And Rich will be joining us for the question session and answer. Okay, so welcome Catherine.
Thanks very much Tracy, and I'm really pleased to be here this afternoon. And hello to colleagues. It's not quite the same not being in the same room, but actually it's perhaps easier for us to just get a quick half hour catch up together. So really pleased to see everybody. And I'm very pleased to be talking about the city council's work with the Nottingham ICP. It's a really important priority for us working together. And personally, I feel really excited because I think we have opportunities to make a huge difference to the health and wellbeing of our citizens. And I think the approach that we're taking as a whole team in Nottingham puts us in a really good place for this. So I'll share this afternoon a bit of information about the city council, who we are. And then I'd be really pleased to take that conversation forwards and answer any questions and explore areas you're interested in. So the headlines of the city council. We are an organisation that has a really wide range of responsibilities. And part of the way we want to work with the ICP is thinking about all of that range. So it's not just about social services, it's about the much wider areas. So we're responsible for development and growth, the planning, big projects in the city, you know, the trams, some of the big building projects, public transport. We've got a whole commercial and operations area which works in our parks, the sports facilities, the cultural offer, deals with parking, deals with transport, and some of the infrastructure for energy. And it's got a regulatory service. So that means as well that we're involved in things like environmental health services, inspecting food premises, the safety of landlords, all that sort of area. So lots of ways we connect into people's homes. We've got a central strategy and resources function, as you'd expect with a big organisation. And we do a lot of commissioning. So again, something that is something we do in partnership. And then the right hand side of this is the whole area that relates to people, which is my area of responsibility. And that covers our services for children, our adult social care services, all the work that we do with schools and education and public health. So my invitation to you this afternoon is when you think about working with the city council, remember we're a really broad organisation. We're a politically led organisation, sitting under the leadership of councillor David Mellon, 55 councillors who work in 20 wards all around the city. And you can see here the portfolios that they hold, which reflect the responsibilities of the council. But the thing I think that's really clear is that our councillors are very much local people who know their local areas, who have got fantastic local networks, and who are also very committed to making a difference to the health and wellbeing of our citizens. So they're very keen to be connected and have some great connections into local communities. So in an overview of Nottingham itself, when we talk about Nottingham as a local authority compared with other local authorities, we're a tight city area and Nottingham doesn't have much in the way of leafy suburbs. So you know, we have statistically a lot of deprivation, the 11th most deprived local authority. And for children going up in the city, slightly higher than that, the sixth most deprived area for children to grow up in. So it means that our families, our individuals are facing some of those real challenges that relate to poverty and to life opportunities. And obviously the kind of impact that has on their health, which you'll be very familiar with as well. There are 42,000 children in the city that live in families where people aren't working or the household is low. And that's, you know, that's a significant impact on how we think about the people that we're working with and supporting. The city council has set out its responsibilities and its priorities in this schema. And I think this is just helpful to think about the kinds of areas that we work in. So starting from the top and moving around clockwise. I mean, at the centre, the councillor is always very keen to focus on citizens at the heart of everything that we're doing. And in terms of people, the outcomes we're looking for is for children to be thriving, for young people and students to succeed. So we've got a huge student population in Nottingham that puts a particular opportunity and some particular stresses in the city. We have families and older people that we want to be able to thrive. I think there's a big theme for us about helping people to get on with their lives independently in a really thriving city. We're looking for people to be able to learn and reach their potential and for people to be healthy, both in mind and body. And obviously, mental ill health being a really significant element as well as our physical health. In terms of Nottingham as a city and the environment, the kind of headlines there in terms of the commitments are about to cleaner, environmentally sustainable environment. You'll see that Nottingham really looks to take a leading role in terms of in terms of environment, in terms of green technology. And I think that's something that threads through all of the work we do. So we know that people's health is improved if the air is cleaner. You know, we know that young people will grow up healthier in a better environment. Good housing is important and we have a huge housing stock within the city itself. So one in five people in the city live in a Nottingham City Homes home. And we therefore have a direct connection with them. We see them about repairs, we're in contact about rent, we've got tenancy officers. So people that are very much connected with some of our more vulnerable citizens in our own housing. But Nottingham has also taken a stance in relation to landlords as well and the standards that we expect of good housing in, whether it's provided by ourselves or by private landlords. And we know that impacts on health, of course. We're involved very much with transport and also wanting to create an environment where people can live together, a really diverse group of people can live together well in our city. We're also very much responsible for the development of cities. So how we grow Nottingham with a, it's a challenge at the moment, of course, with Covid. And also, I think cities are changing a lot, aren't they? But a vibrant city centre, neighbourhoods that are really thriving. We do a lot of work in terms of jobs and employment development, and then a strong local economy, working with our local businesses. So we have that reach that goes into the business sector as well as the sort of service and care sector that we manage. Respect for Nottingham is a signal about how we live together well as a city, with an emphasis on safety, community safety. So our community protection officers, lots of feet on the ground. People who know our local neighbourhoods know what to be concerned about and have a resource to help out. With a commitment to reducing crime, to reducing antisocial behaviour, and really supporting those cohesive, stronger communities. And again, the fact that we work in that area means, for example, that we've got really good relationships with some of our communities in the city that we might find harder to reach or we might find more difficult to engage with informal services. So we've got some good roots in there. And then the final priority for us is about serving Nottingham better with the way that we run the organisation. Good council services, use of resources, a really strong focus on equality and driving out inequality, customer service and that meaningful engagement and consultation. And part of the work we're doing at the moment, people might be cited on the work that we're doing in response to the MHCLG reports and the Public Interest Report, is very much looking at some of that governance arrangements that underpin the council. So a broad set of responsibilities that touch on the lives of citizens and our city in a huge number of ways that we kind of bring into that connectedness with the ICP. Just touching on some of the key priorities that would be in our sights at the moment. And there will be work going on to develop a new council plan, so this will be set out. But obviously Covid response and recovery is a huge piece for us in partnership and some really good local partnerships with health service colleagues that are making a huge difference there. Responding to the MHCLG reports, which I've just touched on, and shaping the council's priorities. And we're going to be doing a lot of transformation, so you'll see a lot of change in the council. We'll try to keep you cited on that. But we'd also want to engage with partners in talking about that. We've got challenges with our budget, so the work that we need to do to balance the budget. But the carbon neutral agenda will continue to be a real priority. And the Integrated Care Partnership is a really important priority for us as well. I'll just step colleagues through a little bit of detail about my area of work, which is the People's Director, it is perhaps, you know, some of the closest work with the ICP. Here are the mugshots, but that's myself and the four directors. Helen Blackman for Children's Services, Nick Lee for Education, Carolyn Couse is with us over the next couple of months temporarily for adults. And then we have a new director, Sarah Storey coming in, and Alison Challenger for Public Health. In terms of our Children's Services, including this, and if the slides are going out, it might be useful reference. But the areas across Children's Services range from safeguarding, front door for people that are concerned and need to make safeguarding referrals, through to our social work teams, our early help teams, and the children that we actually care for, children in our care or children in foster care. Our ambition in Children's Services is to support families and children at the earliest opportunity and very much whole system working. So I'm delighted that one of the priorities for the ICP is to work with our children and particularly our care levers as a system to improve their life chances. We're all about trying to build capacity and resilience. And that's within families and within children, but that's also within the whole system. And there's some important partnership working in small steps, big changes particularly. And a name check to the Dolly Parton Imagination Library, which is getting thousands of books out to very young children to help them start their journey of enjoying reading and being ready for school. We've got an improvement plan for our Children's Services following our Ofsted focused visit and partners sit around the table. And I'm very pleased that Tracy, who's hosting us this afternoon, is one of the partners who's round that table, helping us to improve our services together. In terms of adult social care, the way that we think about our adult social care is sort of chunks to think about, mental health and whole life disability. We've got some provision in adult social care that we make directly. So our day services, residential services and our shared lives. So in some ways, thinking about that's a bit like fostering for adults. And so shared life services where people live in a family home rather than a residential home. We do a lot of work jointly with colleagues across the services in terms of safeguarding and quality assurance. And our frontline social work teams, working in local areas, providing that assessment, arranging support for people and working closely with our hospitals. This slide shows a few of the headlines of the numbers of people that we're supporting in our adult social care services. So around 7,000 people in the city are getting direct support from adult social care. We have around 22,000 contacts come into us, towards 10,000 new contacts every year. So there's a lot of people that get in touch with us that we work very hard to help them to stay independent. They don't necessarily need a service from us, but they need some good advice and some good signposting. One of the things we're really emphasising across all of our services is to support people to stay independent and to stay well and to stay in their own homes. So you know, we're really looking at prevention, at helping people to be connected in their communities. We know there are great resources in the communities and some of that's been more visible in Covid. Helping people to live independent lives so that they don't need to be reliant on statutory services but can find solutions for themselves. Or when they do need some of our direct support, using an approach of choice and control. So they're very much in the driving seat and using personal budgets so that people can work out the kind of support that is best for them. Our services range right through in adults from 18 upwards. In terms of education, the structures that we have in education is a whole team that meets our statutory responsibilities in working with schools and in relation to children and young people with special educational needs and disabilities. And we also have the Nottingham Schools Trust. So 30 schools which are working in a trust with the local authority alongside the academies around the city. So this slide just gives a bit of a scale of that, touching on, you know, over 100 schools in the city, five special schools and pupil referral units. A large number, secondary is a largely multi-academy trusts. And then Nottingham Schools Trust has got 26 primary schools, three academies and two special maintained schools as well. But we're also very much linked with the nursery offer and the childminders. So 190 childminders, 83 day nurseries and playgroups. And then of course, the two colleges and two universities and a handful of independent schools. So again, a real reach across our communities and families in the city. This slide gives a bit of a flavour of the elements of service in our education services. So I've touched on the work with children with special educational needs. But we also have our virtual school for children in care. We focus on pupil benefits and that's been very, very visible, hasn't it, free school meals recently? All the early years offer and then the inclusive learning and disability services that are so important, as well as some trade in services and partnerships with schools. And then public health with our Director of Public Health and four consultants. Some required areas for us to work on and some which we think are particularly relevant to Nottingham and Nottingham's needs. But all about looking to impact on the health needs and wellbeing of our citizens. You know, very much directed by understanding the needs of our citizens locally. So some of the priorities in the people's world. Obviously, the pandemic has been, is a huge issue for us, the work in improving children's services. Inclusion is a vital theme for us. So we wanting our children with disabilities and learning needs to be included in mainstream schooling wherever that's possible. Youth violence in the city is an area that's a high priority for us. And then we have Transformation Programme in our Adult Social Care Services, which is working its way through very positively. We're working hard with partners to bring together our services for very young children and to work together for integration with the health service. So areas we can explore. And then also our financial sustainability to working out how to be as efficient as we can in those, achieving those outcomes. So I think, just to summarise for me, I think the opportunities in our ICP for Nottingham are fantastic. And the importance of the city council in the ICP from the beginning, I think, has shown that it's more than just a health partnership. And we would like to really bring, you know, that wide range of opportunities to the table. It's a really important part of how we see the city council moving forwards. We are linking our neighbourhood services to the primary care networks at the moment. So doing some really good work just starting there. And thinking that there's some real opportunities for, you know, for trailblazing here about the wider determinants of health and how we use the whole of those opportunities in the city. Because at the end of the day, I think city council services are very much about improving wellbeing. So when we bring that together, we really have an opportunity to impact on health and wellbeing. So those are the slides that I wanted to take you through. But I'd be really pleased to hear any comments or questions you might have.
Thanks Catherine, thank you. So we've got some questions. And so the first one, Catherine, really is just to say thank you. And it's in the chat box, people saying thank you for a great presentation. And will we share the slides? So we absolutely will share the slides. There is a question about finances, Catherine. So I'll read it to you, that finances are real pressure at the moment for all parts of the system. So asking really how the local authority can avoid the cost saving it needs to make, having knock on effects on the rest of the system.
Yes, thanks Tracy. And I think, you know, people will be aware that the council's facing some really difficult financial position at the moment. And part of what we're doing in that is really thinking about the outcomes that we need to achieve and our commitments. And there's going to be some really hard decisions in there about what we can afford to do and what we might not be able to do. But in amongst that is very much about thinking, how can we do things differently? And how can we achieve outcomes differently? And I'm conscious, and I think we're conscious as partners, when we have to make savings, there's the risk of impact and that other partners will be concerned about that. So I think our commitment is to think very carefully about that, to think about it in the whole system when we're making those decisions and those proposals. And then also to make sure that we take the opportunities to think together about, you know, the finances are going to be pressured in public services, you know, as we go forward. But let's think really smartly about how we can achieve outcomes with the very best use of that kind of shared pounds for Nottingham. And I think that's certainly something that I see the ICP is able to really help us with. So our work on sort of the, I'll get the term in, I'll leave you wrong, but the multiple needs that people have, people with particularly complex multiple needs, I think has led us to do some really good work that will help us suspend our funding well. But I think my commitment is, you know, we will want to communicate with you, consult and understand impact and seek to mitigate that in partnership.
Thanks Catherine. And we've been asked around, obviously Nottingham City having some of the most deprived populations, which you obviously talk about in your presentation. And so just asking a question around what are the councils' priorities over the coming year to address those?
I think that the council over the coming year is very much focusing on how do we, what are the outcomes that are important for our citizens? So, you know, our council's be very committed to understanding the impact for our citizens. And particularly of Covid, because that's another, you know, we really understand the, how that exacerbates the impact. And then thinking about how we use the resources that we have to best target that. So one of the themes that's happening for us at the moment when we're making decisions and when councillors are thinking about decisions about budgets is that we might need to be more targeted in the work that the council does, but then work much more closely and continue to build on the work with our local communities to support them in the work that, in what they're able to bring. So really using those assets and communities and partnerships between us really well. So I think that's the approach for us, is to understand the needs really well and then think about in partnership how we meet those needs.
Thanks Catherine. And it's quite interesting because some of the questions that are here are around, obviously us working together. So thinking about social care staff have got that critical role in citizens' wellbeing. And so how can health partners work more closely and bring health and social care professionals together? And so, and Rich might want to come in from a wider ICP here as well, Catherine, but keen to get your views first.
Shall I, yeah, shall I kick off? I mean, I think that very often the thing, my experience of working in multidisciplinary teams and in partnerships, is that the relationships make a huge difference. And you can do an awful lot when you know who to ring up or when you've got a trusted colleague. And also when you understand what each other does and what each other's able to do. And I think some, the work that we're talking about in the ICP, what is thinking about those neighbourhoods? Thinking about how primary care is delivered at a neighbourhood level and social care as well. And how from a city council point of view, you know, we've got tenancy support at neighbourhood level, community protection. So I think one of the ways that we can really develop this is by getting to know each other in neighbourhood teams. And we can think about what does that mean about the way that we work? And how we build those connections and how we might make that formalised? But my starting point is going to be, let's get to know each other and let's get to understand, shared understanding of needs and shared understanding of problem solving at a local level. I don't know if Rich would want to come in and add to that.
Yeah, thanks Catherine. So yeah, I mean, I think where the city council has such great synergy with the ICP is that it shares exactly the same population. So the city ICP is a city, the same as the local authority. And just to kind of build on what Catherine was saying about neighbourhoods, it's really important that, you know, we all live in the city, but you know, we don't spend our, we spend our times in parts of the city, perhaps in neighbourhoods. And it's important for us to think about communities that people, that people live in and what you access, what you access and how you want to access things in different communities. And the city council has really shown a commitment to integrating and kind of aligning services with the rest of partners within the ICP. And Catherine mentioned neighbourhoods there and the importance of neighbourhood services. So you know, community protection and that tenancy support, you know, having access to green spaces, community centres, you know, all of that sort of thing is really important, you know, as part of our wider health and wellbeing. You know, we talked about the wider determinants of health last week. And it's having access to those things that, you know, enable us to sort of feel happy and healthy. And they have to be linked in really well with your, with your GPs and your nursing services or your hospital. So you know, for an ICP to really function, we have to get all of those wider services to work. Those kind of maybe we wouldn't see as non-traditional health services, but actually they have a really big impact on wellbeing. And the city council is really showing leadership within our ICP to get us to that place.
Thank you both, thank you. And obviously, part of this Share and Learn is exactly that, isn't it? Is about building up that knowledge and that sharing of understanding of each other. And so one final question in the last minute. Catherine, if you, if the council could successfully deliver one objective over the next 12 months, what would it be?
Oh my goodness.
Hard question to finish with.
Oh, it really is, it really is.
You may want to ponder on that Catherine, you might want to post it out.
Thinking about one, isn't it? I mean, I think, I think what would be brilliant in terms of our work together is for, is from an ICP level, is for us to get to a point where we understand what those local teams are that know their local population and feel really empowered to be able to work together to make that difference that everybody can make and that we can do more of it when we're working at that, working together in that way. So that would be my kind of dream for the year perhaps.
That's lovely, thank you. Thanks Catherine and thanks Rich. So that concludes our second Share and Learn. So that concludes our second share and learn. And we've got obviously our third one coming up soon. And we will answer all the questions and get those sent out. And we're just working on how we do that, but it's been great to have you all here this afternoon. So thank you, thanks for joining us.